It's September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven thirty P. I'm going to call the special meeting of the planning zoning commission to order. Members present, myself, Rob Chavitt, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Becca Sinosty, and Joseph Paul. All right, first thing on the agenda tonight, nothing on C. So, item D, public hearing, PZ dash twenty-two dash fifteen. Special permit application for alcohol sales, twelve column turnpike. It's the new Flat Penny's Kitchen applicant Laura Faneo owner Willington Station LLC. What's the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, from right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, everybody, I'm Laura Peneo, the new owner, the owner of new Flat Penny's Kitchen. Here with my family tonight, my husband Todd, my son Will, my daughter Sam, we're family-owned business. Really excited to be in the town and everybody's been so welcoming and so nice to us. It was I'm here tonight to ask you all for permission or move forward with the application to state it connected for our liquor license. We just planned to add dinner and you just be able to offer just wine, beer, and maybe just a small bar supplement our meals. We're in knowing is going to be a bar and we're done serving dinner, we're going to be done serving alcohol as well. I mean, I won't be there any later than nine o'clock. On Wednesdays and Thursdays, probably serve dinner until eight, but Friday and Saturday until eight thirty. We're very family-oriented, I don't want the late-night crowd. Our bar area is a very small percentage, I believe it's nineteen seats, the whole restaurant itself seats eighty-two. So, I appreciate your time, consideration regarding our application and please feel free to ask me any questions if you may have. Yes.
So, would the bar area be with like, like for breakfast where people sit at the counter there?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, divided.
And this is just for beer and wine?
Uh, probably, I don't want to offer full range of alcohol, but a limited bar. But like I said, not this huge, that kind of atmosphere. And it's right.
Questions? Mission?
Comments, Sandy Marco, just. The only things I see that would apply or stand out is five hundred feet, which clearly seems to me, we said it can't be within five hundred feet of. Of Barrett's. But secondary school, primary school, place of worship, that would apply. The only part that interests me, and I don't really know how it applies, so maybe we can talk about that. No restaurant will serve alcoholic beverages unless it contains no less than twenty-four seats, which is fine. The applicant is saying that they're reserved to nineteen seats, that matters, I was gonna say they have what, sixty-eight, I think you said?
Yes.
For any restaurant containing a bar. Tap river, so the space shall contain no more than fifty percent of the squirt foot, so I think those, all of those are met. So, I don't see any, those are the two things that I think would apply to this particular application. And I don't see any conflict because it's under section fourteen, I don't see any conflict with that.
And here's the way outside.
Yeah, right now, I guess. What are we trying to say, that well, for any restaurant containing a bar? Some space of the table, so you get have more than half of it to be the bar, I guess is what we're trying to say, is that what we're trying to say? Right, yeah, okay, why would we say that? Why did we care when that was ninety-six? Why do we care about that?
So, they're actually serving.
So, maybe, so they're actually serving food, but.
Okay. It's not a full one.
Yeah, I wonder why whoever said it ninety-six wasn't made it, so. That's the rule, okay, that's science.
Any further questions to the commission?
Oh, I would say they did a great job, right?
Yeah, I agree. How's, how's business going so far?
Pretty good.
Terrible.
So, wait for it right here.
See guys.
Everybody, I can't say how I spend and just walk in like, wow, you know, thank you for being here. Just, you're really, you know, being here, took us a while, but. Liberty.
I was, we're excited to be in town, so everyone really wanted to come.
Good things take time.
Nice to hear.
Absolutely, so, a lot of nice people so far, so that's really nice.
Okay, great, now that the commission, I guess, has gone to ask some questions, public, can you public comment on this?
Well, hi, I'm Michael Mazo, I'm the property owner at Willington Station, twelve fourteen sixteen, I just wanted to show my support for Flat Penny's Kitchen. It's been growing and developing their business and they've been great to deal with. It's been a long road for, for everyone getting it all together, but dealing with them has been wonderful. And I believe that not only the true restaurant professionals, but, you know, they've been honest people and great to work with. And I believe that they'll only bring value, added value to the town.
Further comments? Yes, Ralph?
Ralph, to this forty-seven, Billisville wrote, my only question, I, I was on the commission when the original restaurant was open. Back nine. And it was an issue concerning seating and septic capacity. And so, my only question is, has the health department signed off on this? I, I have no real problem with, I have no problem at all with that. That was a question for a little lesson.
Fire marshal's been through, health department, had a sign on. She will be back and.
She had a subject.
The staff who takes it totally, right, they have brand-new. Not, not brand-new, excuse me, not, not new, right? Yes. Right.
Okay. Further?
Someone online.
Who we have here? Melissa Miller, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Melissa Miller, fifty-five Mahalayak Road. I just wanted to say it's great to have another little restaurant in town. Breakfast was wonderful, the service was great, and I just came on just to support them and say, hopefully, they can get just a little small liquor license. I know a lot of people like to have like a mimosa with breakfast, or, you know, I think I'm looking forward to having a new dinner place in town, too. I just wanted to say thanks so much for taking a chance on our town.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? I don't see anybody. All right, so anyone make a motion that.
I move with close the public hearing for PZ twenty-two fifteen.
Let's look in. Fall in favor.
Bye.
All right, the way this works is we're going to move into the other public hearing, so, you know, you will come up under new business.
Thank you.
All right. So, we. Item B, PZ dash twenty-two dash eleven, special permit application for expansion of home occupation. Had propane delivery at one sixty-three Ruby Road, applicant owner David Litwin.
Yep. You have that whole sector. Well, you're my customer. Basically, family worked the business, subject works great in warm weather, but. We're just a little truck, so. So, we balance out business, I was looking at propane delivery for residential prices.
And what's the details on that, how big a tank or how's this going to be done?
Basically, just you bought a truck to get it filled up in the morning, go, come from a various location, it's kind of the same.
How many gallons is Bob tail full?
Three thousand is what I'm looking. I didn't read some regulations, took me a while applying for separation distance based on size. It was really related to fixed location. Thanks. In terms of trucks, I couldn't find anything for separation distance. Because the service depends on building, you might be five or ten people in the building.
So, there's. So, there's no storage tanks whatsoever on that. But, yeah, I'd like to see the regulations we have.
I don't know how many.
It's all right. This is more for tanks, what we're looking at here, okay?
Because the only thing I have to really plan.
All right. Mike, you aware of anything?
No, so, when we had spoken about his application, my takeaway was that he's, he's asking for approval to, to conduct a different. Component of, of the operation on the property, but he's not storing fuel on the trucks. The intent is he picks it up, delivers it, and the truck comes home at the end of the day empty. So, that there's a different truck that'll be parked on the property beyond the septic vehicles that he's got there now. But it's not a situation where he's gonna, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, he's gonna go down, fill the truck up, and deliver over the course of five days. And every night, they'll come home with a massive storage of, of help in the truck. And am I, okay, so, we're not getting into a lot of those other safety criteria, because it's essentially parking empty. It won't be seen.
Questions for the commission? Public comment on this one, yes, Ralph?
Sorry, Ralph to this forty-seven, Billisville wrote. How does this where? Yeah, for uses, six point oh one, four oh nine. I read that, it needs a special exception.
Natural propane or the gas manufactured by other than a public utility, and that's a gas storage, just principal use. That's the principal use, how do you read that?
Yeah, this is essentially, he's just parking commercial vehicles on the property, there's no manufacturer, distribution, storage.
That truck may come back with no liquid propane on it, but it will not be empty. Will be in the tank in gas form. And what happens if the truck comes back and it's not empty of liquid propane? It's gonna be parked on the property.
How you interpret this, my principal use is the key word?
The six oh one oh nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that the commission could, I mean, obviously, if the use is ultimately established, it'll have to be inspected by fire marshal. And have to be, he'll have to meet any standards related to that. The commission could. There'll be different regulatory agencies. So, we could make the approval very explicit in that the, the operation being allowed is the parking of vehicles, essentially. He's, he's conducting an operation from the property. But just as he does with his septic company, he's not disposing of what he picks up in his trucks every day on the property. You could, you could put a condition of approval on it, that the trucks need to return to the property free of liquid propane. Um, but, you know, I. I, I don't know how you answer that there may be something in, in gas form.
It's very possible that it's gonna be something comes back, expense it all, that's.
And I'm not an expert to know what the, the risk is. I mean, if somebody has a, an oil tank or a propane tank that's set next to their house to fuel a generator, or those, those are things I don't know. There aren't regulations related to them. But you could certainly put a condition on the, the activity so that nothing, no storage, vehicles had to be empty when on the property. That's more comfortable.
Well, it's a special exception regardless, right? Well, he says except to store for just a beauty, distributing purposes. And the distributive development G may be permitted as a special exception, I'm not familiar with general statutes, five forty-one, part two. You said two bobtails?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you're probably going with regular bobtails.
Yeah.
They go like twenty-eight hundred gallons.
Yeah.
Got. We have to six hundred gallons. It would be impractical to come back empty on any given day, I mean, there's no way, yeah, manage that, so. As soon as something left. Parse it out, so you're always coming back a little bit empty. Like, so. An FPA fifty-eight, I think, is what guideline, is what the guideline for storage post-buildings, but looks like you have enough room to put them there, right?
Did you have some day here?
Yeah, you got.
Funny, they have the health and safety day, this is. PA. Well, see, the first admission, that was essentially the way propane. The war, by cooking materials, wire insulation. And then. And he wants it.
Also, see that away from addition sources, away from all the owned buildings, wouldn't be any near anyone else's building. Or themselves. I don't know what those state threats say. But it's in the bulk record, so.
Yeah, the state regs are obviously non-negotiable, he meets them, or he doesn't get approved, right? We, the only other thing that I can do, which obviously we can't solve tonight, would be to try to ping someone in fire department, a fire marshal, to get a sense of. You know, from a fire marshal perspective, would there be anything that he'd be interested in, anything that he would look for, or recommendations? I could, I, I could have that.
What is heritage fuel, what are, what are their, right there, they have storing, they have trucks on their site.
Is that just oil, heritage, they do?
No, I don't think they do.
Yeah.
Yeah, oil, propane, I don't think there's a big difference. Like, there's more BTUs than oil, and there isn't propane.
There's this six point oh one, point oh nine, except that the storage for distributing purposes is storage, they're referring to storage in a bulk tank, and you're.
That's the one.
Yeah. Seems you differentiate between that and bobtail truck, which, you know, they, those are stuck around to deliver.
Right.
Like, it said the Willington Fire Marshal already commented.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, he had the conversation, but it was with the applicant, so I haven't spoken as I, I don't know what they specifically talked about.
We did converse through.
Okay. He must have talked to. You talked to you? Yeah, we don't have anything in the files. Yeah, I, let me see, I, I did not speak to him, but, let me see, we've got something in the file. But again, similar to a building code, if we're looking at the fire code, and it's, if it needs to meet a specific criteria, and he doesn't, and he doesn't move forward.
Right, right.
There's not a lot of arbitrary.
Right.
Let's see. I, I do have, I do have some, something that looks like an email chain that was included with the fire marshal, well, former fire marshal. We have a new fire marshal as though. July one, so it would have been the previous, so, I mean, I can certainly connect with that, with the new fire marshal, and get if there's any additional comments that he has. I don't think, you know, be anything vastly different, but it looks like that discussion happened right around December. Not trying to.
Okay, so I'm gonna see if there's additional public comments here, and then I'll probably continue this. That way you don't get time to do that. Any, any additional comments on this, yes?
Hi, James Marshall, forty-six, Fisher Hill, just a question, is this seems to be more of a transient, you know, short-term storage, or is there any stipulation in the application? The quantity of trucks that can be stored outside?
At least two, we spent, we spent twenty-eight hundred gallons of this. Supposedly empty, you know, when they come back, which.
We're not.
Have we, that'd be unreasonable, but. All right, thank you.
The regulations.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Thomas, and this is my fiance, Maureen, so we, we own and reside at forty-one Coswell Road. We also own forty-five Coswell Road, which is approximately a mile from the liquor. Before we begin, I'd like to thank Chris and Mike for their professionalism during our conversations in the past few days. And to the board, thank you in advance for the opportunity to speak, and your patience for my presentation is a bit lengthy and a bit necessary. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to comment on Mr. Litwin's comment that he has over eighty acres. By regulations, the home occupation permit has to be upon the residencies, the residency, not his jointed property. Which he doesn't have eighty acres to apply this business to, the home resident is on eleven acres. In which it's all jammed in a hundred-by-hundred-foot area, all of these trucks, all of these trucks. Maureen and I are here tonight with two topics and several concerns with Dave Litwin's applications for a special permit for an septic business to expand to an additional business. That delivers propane as well to his current home occupation permit, which both appear to intertwine each other. I'd like to pass forward a copy of my presentation to the board. Like. Tom records, Mr. Litwin applied for a home occupation permit for septic on eleven fourteen, two thousand and twelve. Upon said application filed into town records, it's signed by planning zoning agent Susan Jorgensen, is clearly written and initialed by Dave Litwin in that. No outside evidence of business, truck not to be visible from road or by adjacent property, which not has been the practice for over six years. Also, within town records is assigned documented eleven fourteen, two thousand and twelve, from David Litwin himself, stating that there will be no evidence of the existence of home occupation. Which has not been a practice also for over six years. I'd like to submit those documents. To the mention, as mentioned to the board. Pursuant to eleven point zero one, point zero one, point zero one, Wellington, Connecticut zoning regulations, section three definitions of a home occupation. It appears that Admiral Sepphic does not meet the criteria and is in compliance within the definition of a home occupation for business involved, but not limited to. Admiral, Admiral Septic has employees that are non-occupants of the residency property. During the course of the years, if you go back on the internet, you could read reviews, which are stated within his own site also. That there, there's a list of at least six employees that were not supposed to be associated with this business, B. Uh, there are commercial trucks such as, such as two septic back trucks that contain and haul human waste, one box truck, one dump truck, one backhoe, one excavator. One large trailer for hauling such equipment associated with the septic business, which has, which has been in clear violation of the zoning laws. For that, it is in total view up from the road. Pursuant to regulation eleven dot zero one dot zero one dot zero one, the home occupation shall have no employees who are not permanent residents of the subject dwelling. In which Admiral Septic is in non-compliance, because David Litwin has employees who are not permanent residents of said dwelling. I'd like to pass, pass forward to the board, you from the internet, for Admiral Septics required, acquired from the real Yellow Pages. With comments of David Litwin's employees who are not permanent residents of the residential building. And I'd also like to state that Admiral Septics, non-permanent employee, has worked on my rental property in two thousand and twenty, which is against zoning regulations. Admiral Septic is located at one sixty-three Ruby Road in an R eighty residential area, and does not appear to be in compliance of operating under. Definition of section C of the home occupation permit, nor does he appear to be in compliance to what is a very misleading description of what is associated with Admiral Septic's daily operations. Within his said application dated November fourteen, two thousand and twelve, which is on file with planning and zoning. Admiral Septic is in non-compliance with regulation eleven dot zero one dot zero two regulations and subsections. As his vehicles associated with Admiral Septic are commercial vehicles, are parked on the property in clear view from the road. On the side of the garage, in front of the garage, in front of the house, parallel with the road, and between the bushes in the front of the house. I would like to pass forward to the board photos acquired from Google Earth and other Realtor sites and photos taken on September seventh of two twenty, two thousand and twenty-two. That is this year, that physically displays such. Going to Connecticut, to Willington, Connecticut zoning regulations, section eleven, special regulations, eleven dot zero one, home occupations, home occupations as defined in section three definitions of these regulations. Shall be permitted as accessory use to those zones set forth in section five use regulations of these regulations, subject to issuance of certificate zoning compliance. By the zoning agent, a special permit by the commission in accordance with the following standards and criteria. Pursuant to regulations eleven dot zero one dot zero one, own occupation by certificate of zoning compliance, the zoning agent may issue a zoning compliance. In accordance with section twenty dash zero four administration and enforcement, these regulations for home occupations, which meet the following criteria. Pursuant to regulation eleven dots, eleven dot zero one, dot zero one, dot zero two, the home occupation shall involve no outside storage, no display of goods or material. Or signage or other evidence of the existence of a home occupation located outside or visible, detectable from outside of the dwelling. Of which Admiral Section, again, appears to be in non-compliance by phone presented to the board. I'd like to state that the photos that are already have been passed forward, familiar David Litwin's non-compliance of regulation eleven dot zero one dot zero one, dot zero two. In regards to the home occupation for Admiral Septic, it appears that activity does not comply, that the home occupation should not have been issued in our. Our residential R eighty neighborhood, and it appears the pyramid should have been a special permit from the beginning. I would like to ask the board to investigate the operations of Admiral Septic business, doing an onsite inspection to ensure that all zoning regulations are being followed. With total compliance and non-compliance issues, be corrected and resolved immediately to totally reflect the zoning regulations of resident R eighty neighborhood in Willington, Connecticut. The second, the second topic of concern is the application for home occupation by special permit by operating Admiral Septic business. And to add a proposed propane business to this residential R eighty neighborhood. I'd like to pass forward to the board a copy of Dave Litwin's plant site submitted to planning and zoning, labeled by Dave Litwin himself. Site plan for current septic business and proposed business, for a propane business. Pursuant to regulations eleven dot zero one, dot zero two. Pursuant to regulations eleven dot zero one, dot zero two, dot zero two, the home occupation shall be clearly secondary, subordinate, and incidental to the resident, residential use of the property and is shall not impair the residential character of the premises in neighborhood. Accessory buildings may be used for occupations provided that other requirements of these sections are met. Except for permitted signs, there will be no visible evidence or indication of the operation from outside of any building or structure used for the home occupation. For example, there shall be no display windows, outside storage, or display of goods, outside work areas, banners, lights, or other devices to attract public attention. The commission may require that the required parking be screened with use of fencing or evergreen planted. A, the residential use of the property and character of the neighborhood has been and will continue to be impaired and impact the storing and parking of commercial vehicles in clear view of the public as photos have shown with such as two septic back trucks that can paint and haul human waste, one box truck, one dump truck, one backhoe, one excavator, one large trailer for hauling such equipment as these are pieces of equipment associated with Admiral Septic. And then two propane delivery trucks and one box truck is proposed to be added to the existing equipment already parked near site from Ruby Road, which currently is in non compliance with the Admiral Septic business vehicles. B, within the six twenty-four, twenty-two site plan for proposed septic business and propane business, there's no existing screening or proposed screening for employee vehicles parked on parked or commercial equipment just mentioned. C, non permanent residents, employees of Admiral Septic have been parking between the bushes in front of the house on a proposed gravel driveway that runs parallel through Ruby Road. D, there's no current evergreen screening as stated on the site plan. There are only weeds and vines that are also absent nine months of the year. E, I'd like to refer to the roadside photos passed forward earlier and to pass forward more forwards acquired by Google Earth that show there is no evergreen screening to block and hide the evidence of a home occupation business which is required, which leads me to state that the information presented within the site plan by David Littman appears to be entered with unclean hands. Pursuant to regulations eleven dot zero one dot zero three, information required in addition to any requirements of section thirteen special permit exception for home occupation by special permit or section fifteen administration and enforcement for home occupation by certificate of zoning compliance, the following shall be submitted to the committee or zoning agent as the case be based to determine the compliance of this section. Reserring to regulations eleven dot zero one, dot zero three, dot zero one, a detailed statement describing all pertinent aspects of the proposed activity and acknowledging the requirements of this section. A, no such information is on record or displayed on the six twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two site plan. Therefore, the requirement does not appear to satisfy a request that the boarding commission or zoning agent requires. Pursuant to regulation eleven dot zero one dot zero three dot zero two, an accurately drawn plot plan to scale or a sketch with pertinent dimensions depicting property lines, structure location, access drives, parking spaces, screening, existing and proposed. Any other pertinent features. A, the site plan has no drawn to scale or required by regulations or no legend. B, parking spaces and screening for existing and proposed vehicles is not accurately drawn, which is required by regulations. C, site's plan shows trucks to be parked on the side of the garage, twenty-five feet from the road, with no screening. Such parking would be in non compliance to the regulations that would be in clear view from Ruby Road. D, all present equip, all present equipment is in view from the road to date with no screening or fencing, which is in non compliance to the regulations as noted within the photos provided. E, it appears upon the site plan that the proposed and current business operations and parking located at one sixty-three Ruby Road Home Occupation Permit overruns onto the adjacent non resident property of one eighty-seven. But clarity is not absolute, due there is no depicting property lines drawn on the site plan to that is required by regulations. Basically, the proposed site plan contains a lot of nothing and it appears to be deliberately drawn to deflect requirements and is presented with unclean hands. Presented to regulation eleven dot zero one dot zero two, home occupation by by special permit, any home occupation which does not meet the preceding requirements for certificate of zoning shall require the issuance of a special permit by the commission in addition to requirements of section thirteen special permit exceptions of the regulations compliance with the following terms and conditions. I would like to request the board to investigate Admiral's Septics past nine compliance issues that have been presented to the board and verified that all zoning regulations and requirements will be clearly defined and followed in accordance to the regulations before the board considers granting a special permit and an additional business to be added to residential R eighty neighborhood. In closing, the site plan and information within the application submitted by David Littman does not appear to meet the criteria of information that is required within the aforementioned zoning regulations to be considered, nor is Admiral Septic in compliance with the current home occupation permit where David has non resident employees working them while being in non compliance or not meeting the requirements for there is, there will be no visible evidence of indication of the operation of the home occupation business. Admiral parks their business vehicles in a R eighty neighborhood in which some of the vehicles have a business name on it in front of their house and garage on the side of the garage and along of the side of the garage, in which all is in plain view and visible for all passing through traffic. And now they want to add two propane trucks in the box truck in a residential R neighborhood area. At this time, I would request that the board deny David Littman's application for a special home permit until all required regulations have been satisfied, such as a site plan with pertinent details, business activities are clearly defined, or recommendations from the board to propose changes to ensure the residents of Wellington will not be subjected anymore to knowing that there is an existing home occupation business as noted within the regulations. I would also request that the zoning board investigate the non compliant issues of Admiral Septic that have been currently going on in regards to non compliance of the regulations of trucks and equipment be invisible while being parked in plain sight without any fencing or screening. I applaud Dave for attempting to enhance and expand his business to provide for his family and quality of life, but that should not be achieved at the price of other Wellington residents. We live in a small town that prides itself on the character of the town and the rules and regulations are put in place to protect the town and its residents. Everyone must follow those rules and regulations to deserve the quality of life for all, and no one is exempt. And honesty must be applied and followed in an honor system while attempting to live in harmony. Thank you very much for listening. I apologize for the length of this, but it wasn't necessary.
Further public comments? All right. Questions from the commission? I think there's some things need to be looked into. So I, I recommend we continue this. Gives us time to take a look at some of these that were brought up and go from there.
Anything you want us to specifically?
Yeah, maybe for staff to look at the site, see what's going on down there.
Okay.
Meantime, talk to the fire marshal about the other item. Yeah, just see if the, yeah, this is out of character with a resident, home occupation. Before I continue, the applet, do you have anything further to say?
Dave, I've only had positive reviews. I'm rather disappointed. And these people are all trying to make a little. I'm not really sure why it's particularly excessive. Issue came to head in the zoning. Reaching directly, but we can address all the issues.
I have one for the question, Mike. Are there any complaints on record in this business?
Not, not in the last couple of years.
Maureen Locholi. Maureen Locholi, forty-one Pasco Road. My concern or my comment is, we would not have brought this forward. We have also used Admiral Septic for one of our rental properties. We would not have brought this forward had we not, had we known prior that this was a home based business with these requirements and guidelines. We respect the fact that David Littman is trying to make, you know, livestock for his family. However, it needs to be fair for everyone. If you're having a home based business, it needs to be in your primary residence and your primary residence locked. So as this is being brought forward to expand on it, we have recently researched it. And this is why we're just cutting to the table with this. Because prior, we didn't have knowledge that it was a home based business. So we had no concerns about it. We could see it and we were in disgust that the vehicle's there. It's, it has a stench. We've had it at our lots to do separate work. So we know it does have a stench. We don't drive by his home to roll our windows down, but I don't know if it's offensive to other people and me. Other people may not even know that it's a home based business. You're seeing commercial vehicles in a residential area. You may think that he has a commercial permit. However, if it's a home based permit, that's a whole different story.
May I add to that? David himself acknowledged he has eighty acres, which he does. He's got a nice chunk of land over there. If you review his prints, where he's parking the trucks twenty-five feet from the road in an area which isn't too scaled, and I'm going to guess it's maybe eighty feet by a hundred and twenty-five feet deep. You're talking all of this equipment by the road. He's stating that there's evergreen blockage, which there is not. There is no fencing. There is no screening. Everything is positioned right next to the house. I'm driven by, for the septic sucker is between the trees against his front porch almost or in front of, or in front of the garage. It's unacceptable. On that primary residence, he has, I believe, about eleven acres. Why not put it in the back? And that's what asking for a suggestion to do. If he meets the regulations, that's fantastic for him and his family. What the residents should not have to look at it, and Wellington is noted. Nobody shows up for meetings at the select meetings or anything unless it personally affects them. They just grin and bear it and go through it. It's a small town. We understand certain things get and look to decide. And just because David has been called out for his discrepancies that violate the zoning laws doesn't mean the other ones should get away with it either. If David has his order or is instructed to conform, his argument is then is why don't those other businesses have to conform as well? Not because they're violating the laws, gives him the ability to violate the laws. He got caught. It's that simple. He's trying to expand. If you put everything behind as required, out of sight, we would not be here tonight. And by the print, by you'll see what he has, everything is directly on the road and clear view. I have presented pictures during the winter. There is no screenage. I presented pictures from last week. He's got the hood of his truck flipped open, working on it. He's got the hood of the sucker flipped open, working on it. It's all visible by the print. There's no definition of where he's parking or where he's not. He is proposed by the print to put the two propane trucks along the side of the garage ready to scoot out into the, into the yard. It's all in clear view. Adjustment should be made to his eighty acres if he's going to put it on that, but then he has to apply for a permit that one eighty-seven is part of the business. If not, he has eleven acres. Put it over to Neil, out of sight as required by the town regulations. It's a very simple fix.
All right, thank you. Further further comments?
Sorry, I believe I may have misheard. I don't see it written. But did you say that the property is not contiguous, the eighty acres?
He owns several properties, but they're all, they're all adjacent to one. They're adjacent to each other. Oh, by regulations, it states.
That's what, no, I just, I just was.
Okay.
But I think of contiguous, I mean. I was thinking that they're not separate. They are, they are not separated.
All right, I'm going to go ahead.
Certificate of mail, so we don't get the green cards back, but it was performed and he did put the sign up.
All right, I'm going to continue this one until.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on when you want.
Yeah, we're not going to be able to do the twentieth.
I'm, I'm not sure if we're talking to the fire marshal and some of these other things. I can turn it around in seven days.
Yeah.
So we can go to, it'll be the first meeting in October.
When is that? What's the date? Yeah, we can move it there. All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we continue public hearing. PZ dash twenty-two, no, PZ dash twenty-two dash eleven, special permit application for the expansion of home occupation. They had propane delivery at one sixty-three Ruby Road, applicant owner David Zipp went to our October fourth meeting. All in favor? All right, so let's continue then. All right, this next one here. PZ dash twenty-two dash thirteen. This is text amendment application pertaining to the modifications to strategic development zone. Section twelve dot fifteen applicant James Marshall. All right, in light of PZ twenty-two dash ten being open still, I strongly recommend that we continue this. Go ahead. You're probably going to say the same thing I was.
Yeah, so thank you for, thank you for hearing all of us on a, not regularly scheduled evening night. But yeah, given the, the subject of my application, which is a text the text amendment request of section twelve fifteen, the strategic development zone and for the clarification on the requirements for warehouse buildings in town. There's a significant likelihood that there's going to be overlap discussion with the PZ twenty-two.
That's the concern.
Yeah. So in a desire to not cause any conflict for both you or myself, but also to allow, you know, my application to appear.
Yes.
I would like to request that we continue or not continue, sorry, postpone the start. I would like to request that we continue or not continue, sorry, postpone the start of the public hearing until you're regularly scheduled to be October fourth. Because we, PZ twenty-two ten was continued to.
The twentieth, yes, next week.
So if you are, sound like you're willing to consider that request. So I hope you consider that request, but with that continuation, I'd also like to request that, that post, that continuation, with that postponement, I'd like to request that. You know, PZ twenty-two thirteen should be postponed. Before we noted on any future agendas, including the one on the twentieth, just so that there's no confusion. About the public is the one that's still here. Sometimes we need to drop off the agendas as they come out of there, because you're for a long time. But also in light of that, and this is a separate follow-up request, independent of the postponement. I'd like to request that the commission consider a moratorium. On the subjects of my application until it can be heard. That would be a moratorium on the use of twelve fifteen. And also a moratorium on any warehouse applications or construction. Until sometimes the application will be fairly hurt. It can be fairly judged. And any follow-up or supplemental evaluation, you guys may choose to do on your own as a result of that, because it's a hot subject in town. That is fairly complex. That you guys can pursue it on your own. You know, and evaluate yourself. I have no control over the timing and how long my hearings take or how long my. In a decision on PZ twenty-two. But it could drag out, you don't know if there's going to be continued public hearings, you guys have a certain statutory requirement, it's a rule on it. You may ask for follow-up. It could be pretty lengthy, so I just request that as an opportunity to be fairly heard and not have the merits of my application. Without. You know, undue costs, so. I had a letter stating such, which I will.
Requesting that's postponed. Alright, so we're requesting a postponement, not a continuation.
So. The application was officially received by the commission on the nineteenth of July. So sixty-five days from that is the twenty-second of September. So you can either. Extend, get an extension of time to postpone opening the public hearing. In discussion with the applicant to a date agreed upon. So that he can grant the number of days required, or you can open the hearing, take no testimony, which closes the first sixty-five days and starts the next set of timeframes. You've got thirty-five days to close the hearing once it's open, but because you haven't used extension days, you can allocate any number of the sixty-five days to that. But you've got to figure out how you want to do that tonight, because. I'm not going to discuss it on the twentieth.
So we can open this. Then immediately postpone it to. The fourth of October.
Correct, you could, you could postpone it to the fourth of October. You don't have a decision on the other application postponing again. And if you get to the thirty-five days, you'd need to request an extension, but otherwise he has to provide an extension.
So, I mean, is there any? It sounds like the septic irrigation is the same either way from the total.
You have sixty-five days to distribute however you are comfortable. You can distribute it on the, the timeframe to open the hearing, on the timeframe to close, once it's open, or the timeframe issued is.
Postponing the start with a couple of days. An extra eleven days. Because we're not out of that thirty-five. Well, because you, that would be my preference personally, but just in case.
Well, since we have a sort of a recognized conflict here. The fact that we're actively pursuing an application under the very regulations that's attempted to be text amended. Rather than get caught up in timeframe, because I know that that sixty-five, thirty-five days is a little bit hard to digest for me. Is there any advantage to just withdrawing the application and reapplying, was there a fee involved?
Yes.
Was waived the fee, and could we do something to help this out? Because clearly this is more of a regulatory, sort of administrative issue rather than a. True. I mean, this, you know, the, the timing is what we're talking about, not the merits of the application. It's really just the timing of what was presented. Is there any way we could waive the fee and just simply start fresh with a new meter running at a more appropriate time?
I, I mean, I'm, yeah, I think the application fee is something that we could deal with, but I think you probably want to. Be in a position where you either know now or get to a point where you've used your extension days. And make that decision, but you're.
Now, are we sort of limiting ourselves as long as time you then have to deliberate if we.
I'm happy to make that decision. We can extend it at that point.
Yeah.
I see, so we can use up all our time, and then the applicant can extend again and refresh the meter?
Right, because.
That's why.
What, what we don't want.
Want to end up hurting the applicant or ourselves.
Right. We, we have to notice any text amendment application to CROG with a thirty-day lead time. So if he withdraws and resubmits tomorrow, the soonest we could get anything would be the end of October.
Okay.
And that's the other consideration.
Yeah, so.
That's, I just wanted to just administratively.
We don't want, we don't want to add a procedural error to any decision, which would then create a whole.
Yeah, what I was trying to.
So since we don't do this very often, we're gonna, we're gonna open this hearing.
I think his preference is to just postpone.
Okay, alright.
So he's gonna, so he.
I'm giving a letter saying that we have ran any regular statutory extension at times of the start of the meeting.
So.
To the fourth, I believe, did that.
Yeah, that's not resolved, can't at that point.
So it's a twelve day.
Yeah.
No, I understand that, yes. It, it's, so by my math, it's a twelve day extension, which gets us to the fourth.
Yeah.
So if on the fourth, things have not settled, the commission can discuss.
Right.
But, so that's what we're using, about twelve days.
That's fine, that's just, I wanted to, we're like administrative.
I'm glad we're on the same page with this one, because I was, I was thinking heavy on this one.
No, that's just a question though.
Yeah, go ahead.
So not interfering with the decision on the current application, can we suspend? Section twelve point one five for any future applications?
The only way to suspend it would be to eliminate, it'll create a text amendment, basically eliminating it.
Make a motion to.
You can't make a motion, you'd have to treat it as a text amendment, so thirty-day CROG referral, public hearing, and you'll notice. Even to do a moratorium, there are statutory requirements, there has to be a purpose, has to be for a specific amount of time. Just like with cannabis, we had a moratorium to consider the adoption of regs.
Correct. Can you consider a moratorium on?
But we would have to run it as a text amendment, a moratorium is the same thing, it has to be referred thirty days. So we're, we don't buy ourselves any time, your clock will run out on this application before. You run out on any, any of the other regulatory requirements, they would have to go to CROG for review. So you could do any of those things, but you're going to be thirty to forty-five days behind today because of what we have to do statutory.
If that makes sense. Still requested in all honesty, you know, given the fact of my application, I very well can be heard. For extended testing.
Right, I believe you mentioned something specific to warehouses, but twelve fifteen doesn't.
Correct, it doesn't in the application letter, it asks for clarification, my private narrative, it asks for clarification, other, the commission said. Provide clarification on the definition of warehouse.
That's, but that kind of gets into this one here, and that's kind of a different story. Then twelve fifteen is specific to warehouses in any way, right? So.
Right, no.
So. Talking about warehouses is kind of a regular zoning. Issue rather than a twelve fifteen issue, am I right?
Twelve fifteen is, is, is a specific piece of the regs.
Right.
So you could put into twelve fifteen that.
But we want to talk about the definition of warehouse, now we're getting into this, which is another story.
Correct, because there are other zones which would allow that.
That's a different avenue.
I think that given we have so many things in the air related to this, we really need to take it one by one.
I totally agree.
To not, so, so twelve day extension on this application gets us to the meeting on ten-four. Where the commission will have to make a decision at that point. As far as extend.
Well, we're gonna see where we're at with ten.
Right, right. So the next, so we'll, it'll be on that agenda, and you can have a discussion with the other again on how to proceed on the fourth.
Very good.
I don't know if you made a motion whether or not, but. We're on the same page.
So somebody.
Okay, so.
You're gonna take a shot?
You got it.
So I move. There's a tw- put a twelve day extension, is it on the public hearing for this? Before we open. A postponement of PZ twenty-two thirteen.
October fourth.
To the October fourth meeting.
Correct. Yep. I'll do it.
I'll second.
Nice job.
All in favor? Nice, nice motion.
Next time I'll write it out first before I try.
That one got a little confusing. It is.
And just as a, just as a follow-up, just to be clear about show-off, that extensional show-off on meeting agendas on the twentieth, the fourth, whatever it may be, you know, the next meeting agendas. So people aren't confused online.
I don't know, I can do anything about any online confusion, but we'll put it on the agenda. Yes, yes. We will find some way to indicate that it, that there will be no action and it has been continued.
Would that go under unfinished business?
It'll stay under where it is, because we haven't done anything with it.
So it's under public.
So we'll just issue a note under continued public hearings, no discussion, continue to, or something like that.
Sure.
So it'll hang where, where it lives now, and we'll move it forward. They are getting tight.
I know.
Thank you everybody, I appreciate it.
Alright, one, one thing I did realize that on these high-grade hearings, we, I think, maybe somebody can remind me or. If we also have people.
I didn't see any hands go up.
No, there were no ones.
I just want to make sure that we don't overlook anyone else.
No, that's very intensive.
Alright. Alright. Item D, PZ dash twenty-two dash fourteen, text amendment application pertaining to the prohibition of cannabis establishment, section thirteen, applicant. Landing zoning commission.
So just, I guess, a little background, way back. When we were sort of contemplating. The various statutory requirements of cannabis now. We put together for you to review zoning regulations to allow for them, and during the discussion, discussed basically. Running a prohibition to see sort of what the feedback was. We scheduled it, and then there was obviously. Twenty-two ten showed up, and so we sort of hit pause on it, which is why it's happening so much later. Obviously, you're all aware that you adopted the regulations which are in effect, and we have an application which was received. That person participated during one of those hearings and stated that that was the intent. So the, the language that was submitted, which you have a copy of, essentially just makes all cannabis establishments prohibited. Which is the flip side of the coin to the regulations that were established. It would not have any implication on the application that was submitted, because they're obviously not retroactive. And would simply replace that if the commission decided to. Move forward with that.
So this would affect limit any further?
Right, if, fast forward six months, if the application that's currently in, in pending is approved, and you subsequently adopt the prohibition. It makes that application or that operation non-conforming and prohibit any further establishments of, of any kind. On both retail and cultivation.
Can you state that again, Mike, I'm still back on the last one?
Which part? You don't want to hear me talk to all that.
Um, so there's an applica- I'm just trying to put everything, so there's an application. That meets the current regulations.
That was submitted, right, with, under the regulations to allow cannabis, that was approved.
Four meetings ago, something like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the commission, the majority of the commission voted in favor of those regulations.
So if we vote. If we hear and everything, and we say, we put the moratorium, no, we prohibit the use. Does that application stop, or the, if the application's building goes in?
No, they can open, they, they can go through the process, it'll be non-conforming though in the future, so that they won't be able, another one won't be able to open there in the future.
That's what I did, that's why, I missed.
Or any further ones other than that.
Just to remind everybody, this is only the public here, there's no decision being made, it's just, like, this is a public hearing about a new application for cannabis. Since the deliberation and discussion hasn't happened yet on that. But just, just so I'm clear. There were no regulations to cannabis. And then regulations were established, I mean, basically, it was just as, it would have been treated as any special permit retail. Cannabis would have been the same as a jewelry store, as a.
Well, I suppose it was illegal prior.
A little bit, that was alright.
The state said, you don't, you do not take a position on cannabis, you shall treat them as a similar use, which.
Correct, that's right.
Which a lot of people say is liquor store, but, but you're sort of leaning now in the direction of pharmacy.
Yeah.
For, on the retail side.
So. The commission did some work, staff did work, came up with regulations, I remember there was amendments of distance to establishments. And those amendments were drafted subsequent to that. That vote that those were allowed, we then got an application. So that application now doesn't go under the prior regulations where it was sort of a little more wide. It came under the narrower regulations that were established.
Correct.
And then based on, and this is just me remembering, based on, there was quite a bit of public outcry, which didn't seem that it had happened before. Didn't seem that there was a whole lot of public involvement, and I'm not faulting anyone, because I know notices were posted, public hearings were held. All meetings were all open, and the public elected to not participate in those meetings. But because of the, some, because of the timing, cannabis came to the forefront, people spoke out about it, and did hear a few, few positive comments, majority negative. And then it was, we talked about, okay, so we do have the ability. To completely eliminate them, but only, we have to wait for the appropriate time. And it does look kind of silly that we first passed it, and then we might take it away, fine. We're learning as we go, so.
If you remember when, it was during our first meeting at the school.
Right.
Ken Slater sat here, and basically because we knew that there was an application that was being prepared by a, by a, you know, future operator.
Right.
To not adopt anything would mean that we had no standards.
We had no standard, right, we wanted to. Put in, and I, I like to think that we did the right thing, like. And, and in the interest of protecting town and for whatever you want to call it, protecting maybe is the wrong word. I don't know, they're doing it against cannabis in particular, but just in order to sort of create some sort of regulation and control and management over land.
From a, from a procedural or legal, I don't know what you want to call it, but the other thing that we had got clarification from Ken on is. Running regulations to, to regulate cannabis, which is the thing you considered, had you denied that application. That does not mean they're prohibited.
Correct.
Right, so what we came to understand from Ken was that you can deny the text amendment to allow them, and that basically means you have no standards.
Right.
Which is the more wide open option, so to sort of protect. We adopted, so we started this in July, July twenty-first. So it's been going on, you know, thirty-day referral to CROG, et cetera, and the agenda's been pretty slammed up, which is why there's been such a gap.
I'm just trying to frame it all up in line, I don't know if I made it clear or more confusing, but. It's a confusing subject.
Alright, any, any questions? For the commission? This is simply just, we want to see, you know. This is the prohibited future ones. Yes.
Well, I have a lot of questions, Ed Tane and Lisa Lane. Why would we be prohibiting that? I don't understand this. I, you know, some of you may know I'm an attorney, I represent a group of entrepreneurs, not in Willington, they have no intentions to come to Willington. But I've had a firsthand look at their operations, they have a grow operation up in, in Beckett, Mass. They have a dispensary that's going to be opening up there as well. And they have legal hemp operation in Eastford. Hemp is just marijuana without THC in it, and there's no psychoactive element to it. These businesses produce a tremendous amount of foot traffic. For any, any, you know, any air, wherever they go. And, and that's what you want in town. And the average dispensary or grow operation can produce anywhere, a dispensary typically will produce about ten million dollars in sales. Per year. And a grow operation can produce up to twenty million, or more than twenty million dollars in sales. But the dispensary will drive tremendous amount of traffic to, to the restaurants in town. To re- local retail. I know, and we all joke about it, but you know, we can joke about it, but it's really, I mean, there's, you know, and, and I want to see flat pennies get their liquor license, I really do. And I went to the restaurant already, it was, I loved it. But on one hand, it's okay, let's just, yeah, sure, let's give liquor, but God forbid, there's cannabis, it's marijuana, and I don't want to, and I don't want to, please, I'm not, I don't want to sound like I'm, you know, saying anything negative against them, because I think it's a wonderful idea for that, for them to have it. But getting back to this, marijuana, I don't know why there's this disparity in treatment between liquor and, and marijuana. I mean, I don't want your friend, it's been studied, it's been studied ad nauseam. And now it's legal, the, if the result of all these studies is sweeping the country, it is legal. And this is the thing you want, you need, I want to just, the, the point I want to make, one of the points I want to make. When these, when, when a group of entrepreneurs get a license from the state to have a, let's say, dispensary, they make a decision as to where they're going to go. And if we're one of those towns that's just sort of thinking about it, because we're going to put on either a moratorium or a prohibition, whether it's permanent or temporary, they're going to look at that town and see that that's in place, and they're going to move on. And then they're going to put, go somewhere else, they'll go, you know, and we're an ideal location, right off eighty-four. We have Phelps Plaza, you know, we can, or some, there's businesses, there are areas, there are places with this, this can go, I know Phelps Plaza is mostly full, but it's not really, not completely. And, um, there are, um, it is a tremendous opportunity, there is a host agreement that the towns enter into with, with these dispensaries and the grow operations, where you get three percent of, typically, it's three percent of the income. Well, three percent of ten million is three hundred thousand dollars, if I have, if I have my math right, yeah, three hundred thousand dollars. So in addition to all the people coming, they just come in, they buy, they're not consuming it there, they're not allowed to consume it. They come in, they buy it, and they go. And they, they'll, and they'll, 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 they'll go to local establishments to eat, eat lunch, breakfast, lunch, whatever. Dinner, they'll go, you know, and they'll, they'll stop whatever else they need in town. And so this is a tremendous opportunity for this town to make some money, but if we put any kind of prohibition, whether it's permanent or temporary moratorium, you're going to lose that opportunity, they're just going to go somewhere else, they'll, well, they'll just go down the street to Talon. They'll go to one, right off one ninety-five, and they won't buy, then they'll get all the money. And don't think you're going to save the world from smoking pot, the evils of pot, because that's just a silly notion. Alright, whoever's smoking pot now is going to, is already, they're already doing it. So we're not going to, we're not going to, you know, I don't, you know, so I don't, I would urge you not to make it, to, to make it illegal or to prohibit the, um.
We can't make it illegal, all we can do is prohibit it.
But I would urge you not to, I mean, I, I, this is, you know, you know, whether you drink or don't drink, whether you smoke or don't smoke, whatever it is, it is, but, you know, I mean, I don't go to beauty sal-, I don't go to beauty salons, but I have no problem with people having a beauty salon, okay? So if, whatever, teach their own, teach their own, I think it's a big mistake, and I think, and I, I would urge you to, um, to not prohibit, to allow the, uh, a grow operation, you know, we're trying to get business in the town, the kind of business that we want. We don't want, you, you know what the townspeople, how they feel about the, uh, you know, the, all these past hearings that we've had, alright, on the, on the logistics center, okay, you know how the town people feel about that, this is the kind of business that we want. This is it, and so I would urge you to reconsider, okay? Thank you, and if you have any questions, but I, I don't know why, and I just, my only question here is, why are you doing this?
I think the support's been split.
Okay.
It, it's been split, we've heard from both sides, it's still federally illegal to.
Well, that's going to change.
It hasn't yet.
But it's legal, it's legal.
Maybe we, we also have to take into account what our other resident states that aren't in favor.
I understand, I understand, that's why I'm here, just giving my side, my point of view, okay? Alright, thank you all, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
So I just want to mention, we did get, uh, I got an email from Tessa, uh, and she's, she's here, so, okay, you have a hard copy of it.
Obviously, it doesn't have it, we have actual.
She's here, but she emailed it, so we printed it out.
Yeah.
You guys already have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Her hands up.
Go ahead.
You should be able to unmute.
Yep, okay.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Teska Taski, I live at one eight four Wellington Hill Road in Wellington. And, um, I saw the agenda this evening, and I just wanted to weigh in on this issue. So, um, first, I want to thank you for holding the public hearing for the purpose of seeking the public inputs and testimony concerning the application for a text amendment pertaining to the prohibition of cannabis establishments. So today I reviewed the documents that are subject of this hearing, and the memorandum that was prepared by the land use office back in July seventh, um, was, the summary statement indicated that the commission wanted to hear, um, from the public, what the support was or lack of support for these types of establishments. So, I'm, I'm going to ask you to put me in the column, as I do not support this type of establishment in our town. And I believe that we should ban and or prohibit all cannabis establishments, and I have a few reasons why, um, for this position. And the first one, there is a conflict between federal and state law with regard to the legality of cannabis use. The second one is there's a concern of unintended consequences for crime, increased traffic and more driving under the influence on our streets, potential harm to adolescents and those prone to addictive behaviors. The third one is the nexus to our small town, our population is very small, to the larger population of Mansfield and Yukon. And lastly, our town does not have a police force, so those are some of the concerns that I have, and doing a little bit of research, um, on, on the internet today. Earlier this year, forty percent of Connecticut State municipalities have prohibited these types of establishments in their towns. So there is, I mean, some towns are, are saying, yeah, let's have it, other towns are saying no to it. So I really think that, um, we should really think very hard on this, whether we want this type of activity in our town, but for me, my position is I don't think we should have it in our town.
Thank you, Tessa. Nick Kella, go ahead.
Nick Kella, forty-nine Myrtle, uh, so it is illegal federally to have, uh, the cannabis. Also wanted to touch upon how, um, there's been a study showing that six point six percent increase in, uh, injuries in car crashes. And also four percent increase in fatal crashes, when they did a study of, uh, five western states, uh, Colorado, Nevada, Oregon, Washington and California, comparing it to other western states, so they have seen an increase of people getting hurt and also dying, uh, that are using recreational, uh, marijuana, so, again, it is illegal federally.
Thank you, Nick. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Yes, Todd, this is out of forty-one Coswell Road, I had the privilege to speak with Salvatore, the selectman from Stafford Springs, who currently owns the old Wellington Hill Package Store. Uh, recently being, I used to own, uh, recently sold a three family house in Stafford, and I met him and spoke with him, and he is very interested that Wellington denies this permit, so his town can get it, and piggybacking off of the lawyer that spoke, is everything he said is exactly what Salvatore is speaking of brings in. And in the event that, even though Wellington prohibits it, it's going to be sold right up the street to Stafford. So I'm not for it and I'm not against it, but as far as what is allowed and what, what is not allowed is also pertinent to what needs the town to run on for businesses, taxes, and bringing certain things into, like, establish, like, establishments, like Flat Penny. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Yes, James?
James Marshall, forty-six Fisher Hill, um, yeah, I just want to say, I, I really don't have necessarily strong objection to cannabis establishment, but my concern is really strictly about the town's ability to enforce, um, to just enforce law around a set of stuff, whether that be something fitting and, you know, starting up in the parking lot in a way, um, or just general traffic and safety measures. Because, you know, we don't have a police force, we don't have a trooper, um, speed in this town, just general behavior. It's, it's, it may not need to be, it's not really a cause for the zoning or other effects to consideration. Any remedies to that end, probably with the, uh, for a selectman or other agencies here, but, um, yeah, it's just, I, I really, as long as we can monitor and, you know, maintain, um, let's say, the bottom, I see no problem.
Thank you. Further comments? Further comments online? Nothing there?
Just a question, I think this, what can address this question, as far as the three percent revenue, it can be allocated to rest safety, potential safety concerns.
That's correct, so, so there are specific uses that the revenue can be used for, so it wouldn't just go into a, a general fund for general, um, purposes, and I apologize if I have that data in front of me, I don't know if Mike, um, has a, the, kind of an overview of the items that the revenue could be utilized for, and some of them could go to address concerns that, um, the public has spoken of. Education, um, it is one of those, a lot of it would be funneled through our human services department.
For, could it be used for the resident trooper, if you were to, remember?
I'm going to try to pull up the, I have in my original report, it's just.
Familiar that that question was on.
I asked.
You didn't get an answer? That was the question before.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't questioning, that's why I said. I thought public safety was off the table, so, something like. Yeah, I think the human resource, or Jenny's department would benefit.
Right, right.
Something like. Being able to use those.
Right.
And there's something in there about summer employment for youth.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I had it in the, because it's not in the prohibition language, because the prohibition isn't going to have any.
That pushes off to the side.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that money is, it could fill the gap, wasn't it? So it's, well. Well, the more establishments that are created, sort of dilutes each individual's establishment from getting that ten million dollars. Wait, if you have one in fifty miles, you're going to get ten million, you're going to want every four miles.
So. It can go into, uh, streets, improvements, and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailers, hyper retailers, or micro cultivators are located. Um, education programs or youth employment and training programs in the municipality. Services for individuals living in the municipality who are released from Department of Corrections custody probation or parole, mental health or addictive services. Uh, youth service bureaus or municipal juvenile review boards and community civic engagement efforts.
Not public safety direct, directly.
We could have a junior police.
That's all to deal with the effects of.
What was the last one?
Um, community civic engagement efforts.
Even though a lot of towns have like a community services officer or a community support officer. I, I don't know, I'm trying to think, we've done a number of different, there's been a number of trainings in the land use community, in both the governor's office and some of the attorneys that were involved in drafting the law. And I, I don't think that they give me greater detail, I'm trying to find that. But it doesn't seem like it explicitly states it. Though, I don't know the town's budget well enough to know if there's, if the town were to receive two hundred thousand dollars from cannabis retail, could they take the two hundred thousand dollars that they're currently paying for the general fund?
And then take that money.
Correct, so you may be able to do that, I don't know what, what the budget looks like, but I guess that would be another option.
There's not two hundred thousand dollars swing there, so.
I know it's not really related to the prohibition, like, I mean, if you want to keep things open, I can certainly try to answer that question.
I think it's crucial, so I don't think. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on, uh, PZ-C twenty-two fourteen, text amendment application pertaining to the prohibition cannabis establishment. Oh, second.
All in favor? Okay, it's closed. Alright, so, that brings us to, uh, item E, and this should not be, uh, PZ dash twenty-two dash ten, it should be PZ dash twenty-two dash fifteen. And this will be, uh, whether we make a decision or not tonight on the liquor, special permit application for alcohol sales at twelve Talon Turnpike, uh, I personally don't see any reason to extend this to. Alright, I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, a special permit for, uh, PZ dash twenty-two dash fifteen, application for alcohol sales, twelve Talon Turnpike, Flat Penny's Kitchen, applicant Laura Penale, owner of Wellington Station LLC. All in favor? Congratulations, good luck with your business. Alright. PZ twenty-two dash eleven, we know where that's heading, it's been. And you. Yep, to ten-four, we know the story of PZ dash twenty-two dash fourteen. And that was, uh, to ten-four, after Rebecca's lovely motion. Sorry, sorry about that. That's thirteen, I'm, the blue box is throwing me out of whack here, everything now. No, 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 no. Sounds like the old, no matter what, yeah, they're different. Difference bad.
You're going to send out, like, make them like a wedding invitation, now you'll get them personally.
Alright, and, uh, then we have PZ dash twenty-two dash fourteen. I personally like to make a decision. The future date on this after we.
Yeah, let's, let's think about this one.
Let's think about it, we use up our sixty-five days.
Is there anything that you need or want from me?
Oh, this is for people's opinion on it, is what it comes down to at this point. And you're going to get both sides of the coin.
Do you want this shown on the agenda for next Tuesday, or do you want to push this to the fourth?
Push this one to the fourth, please.
And there be a note on the ones that have been extended, et cetera, that just.
Yeah.
For that meeting specifically, not going to be discussed, it's for that fourth meeting.
Well, we'll work.
Somehow, in a nice pre- blue boxes.
You can have a two-page agenda.
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to muddy, like, you know, the twentieth with any of this.
Yeah.
I may do, yeah, yeah.
We don't.
Alright.
So we are still the tree ward? And the safe trees?
What's that? I can reduce the font size.
We're killing. Okay, item E, two sixty-four, Ruby Road, informal discussion.
PZ Commission, Commissioner, my name's Ben Sherry, this is, we go for for Suncap Development Group. Um, just wanted to introduce ourselves, so you know who we are, um, we're proposing a text amendment, but we hired Joe Williams here as our land use attorney, and I'll let him dive more into the details. But before he did, I wanted to introduce ourselves.
He's at Sun, Sun.
Property Group.
What, what is Suncap?
Our real estate development company, uh, headquarters in Charlotte, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Any other questions before Joe dives into the meats and potatoes?
Let's hear what it is.
We, uh, we would like to propose a text amendment to the regulations for the DI designed industrial zone. Um, and that will be to allow a, well, we would, we would like to make the regulations allow, and then we would come in for a special permit to allow a service parking facility at the property listed two sixty-four Ruby Road, uh, to serve as overflow parking for a nearby warehouse and distribution facility that already exists in Wellington. Um, and the reason we want to propose a text amendment is, there's two reasons. First, to clarify that the use would be allowed if the commission, uh, is amenable to it. First, to clarify that the use would be allowed if the commission is amenable to it. I say that because in the regulations, as you know, you have a long list of uses that are permitted in the DI zone. And one of them states garages for the parking of more than two commercial motor vehicles, such as garages. You also have just if you want to note it down, it's section five point oh five, point oh one, point oh two, point twenty-four. The garage. But then you also have the table of uses. Section five point eleven. And that uses slightly different language. There's a little bit of inconsistency between the regulation and the table. In the table, it says automobile parking lots and garages, comma. So it says that in the DI zone, you can have a commercial parking lot or garage, whereas the regulation just says garage. So that would be the first part of the text amendment that we would like to come in with is basically just to add in parking lot into the language in the regulation to allow a certain parking lot for overflow parking. I want to be clear that the, the facility that we would be looking to support has absolutely nothing to do with the one that's pending before the commission on River Road. So just so there's no confusion about that, we're not looking to do anything that relates to that current application whatsoever. The second part of the request would have to do with lot coverage. You know, as you know, you have a table five, excuse me, eight point oh two that provides for lot coverage. And in some of your zones, you just have one number. That's a total amount of lot coverage you can have for building and for paving. But then in some other zones, you have it split between building and pavement. And that's what you have in the design industrial zone, twenty-five percent for building, twenty-five percent for pavement. And our proposal would need to go up to about thirty-five percent pavement coverage. We're not going to be proposing any building. But my thought was, and this is why we wanted to have this conversation, just to get your initial reaction to it, or if you have a different direction for us, we'd love to hear that too. My thought would be just propose one number, fifty percent.
I have a question. Why is this to, is this for employee vehicles? Are these to queue up trucks? Is this what, what, what is the purpose of this lot?
We would propose that it be able to accommodate trucks and employee vehicles and vans, that type of thing.
All together in this lot?
Yes.
Interesting.
For what? For what purpose?
It would be overflow parking to serve a nearby facility for those warehouses and distribution.
So we can guess who that is, because there's only one, but we won't mention it since you're not, but but the do they not have enough parking for their employees now? Do they, do they have enough, too many trucks on the, you know, coming in at once if they need to queue them up somewhere else?
So, yeah, so this is just for, it's usually for the peak seasons, as you do what it's used for, but it's just the same setup that they have at their facility. There's three separate sections, some for auto parking, some for van or tractor parking, and then some for trailer parking. So as a facility, meets higher demands, they can use this facility to kind of utilize it for overflow parking if they have too much on the current.
So this would have to be well lit.
How close is that to the bus garage? I'm trying to like judge down the road.
What, what is this land?
Um, I can tell you.
If that's the big ground.
Is this that recycling operation that kind of figures out? Yeah, there's no active, there's no activity on the property now. It hasn't been for years.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what it was. But I remember when it was before us back ten years ago, whatever it was. Yes.
And to answer your question more directly, yes, it is, they are running out of the firm parking for their current operations.
So this isn't a flat piece of property. This would involve quite a bit of modification to
Correct.
Achieve that.
Yes, and this project would.
If I remember, it kind of goes uphill and.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're proposing thirty-five percent coverage. I don't know how big the parcel is, but I think, you know, you probably see most of what's at the back, so.
Once it goes up there, it kind of levels up.
Okay, so throw a number out there. How many vehicles on the lot by your estimation?
I think the total parking spaces is three forty-six. I could go back and confirm, but that's broken out into different sections. We have done some analysis on sound to just kind of see how it impacts the surrounding areas. We are sensitive to light, so there's opportunity there, but we really want to tackle the text amendment for now to make sure we're going in the right direction. And then obviously, once we go through this process, reach any concerns technically on the road.
I'd be concerned about that curve. In all honesty, we take now, I'm on the fire department, the curve just below there between regular town traffic and people out of town, artists that rode have taken up the same telephone pole four times in a year. So it is worry about traffic coming out of there the wrong direction.
You know, as Ben said, all of that, if, if you gave a text amendment, which we haven't applied for yet, but so we're just chatting tonight about the potential for it, then we would apply for it. There'd be a public hearing. If you gave a text amendment, then we would apply for a special permit. And then the commission would have another public hearing, and you would get into all of that. If we would have to give you information, have the professionals look at it. Of course, most of the vehicles that will be parking in this lot are professional drivers. They're not perfect.
They drive by my house every day.
Yes, I just want to also note, based upon what they said, for the number of parking, they would meet the DOT's major traffic trip generator criteria, so they would need O S T approval. Regardless of, I mean, they're on a state road, but because they're going to trip that two hundred space category, if that's what they show up with, they're going to have to go to the state to look at sightlines and all.
Yeah. Something that.
Ralph, you want to say something so bad?
I do, I do. I can't help it. I'm sorry. This is an informal discussion, so. My input. Well, we're not, but I'm gonna go anyway. In that area since birth. I know that road. Are we looking at tandems going from eighty-four to this facility? Does that make a problem? Because I believe they're limited to one mile from the interstate, the tandem trail. That would be a concern. The other concern is Ruby Road from the emergency entrance to TA South is kind of windy. There's some culverts there. There are some guardrail posts next to one of those culverts that's been knocked over repeatedly. Well, just don't judge that. Well. So if something like this were to be told, I can certainly see some infrastructure improvements to that. Aside from the site.
And we're happy to have that conversation, Mr. Chairman, with, we don't mind gentlemen's input. We welcome everyone's input. I'm just saying that that's probably getting one step ahead of ourselves, because like I said, if, if and only if the text amendment were approved after we apply for it, then we'd be coming back in for a special permit. That's I think the right time for the commission to examine the traffic of a particular facility, because right now we're just looking for if you had any input on the idea of changing the coverage from twenty-five to twenty-five to just fifty as one number. And to clarify, that's the use of a parking lot.
Considering the entity that is not to be named. I wonder if it wouldn't be a better suggestion for them to think about expanding on site.
Can I jump in? You betcha. So the entity that shall not be named came in, had sat down with us in Land Use, that was a really long time ago, and we talked about
I'm aware.
There, we're too big for our britches. We've got stuff offsite. We need to figure something out. There is a conservation easement, which essentially wraps the building, which prevents any additional expansion towards the large four hundred acre piece behind that. They, they can't develop it. It would involve the town and the state coming together to do something with it. So that was our first, my first impression is stick on the site. We've got it there. So they, the, the, the way that that property was developed prevents that from being the case.
Well, and I don't know how far I want to go on this one. I think the proposal to compensate for the use of that rest of the property as it was presented to me would be favorable. That's, that's all I want to say.
Now, in terms of a still trying to like, this is a way, a little ways away from where I'm imagining. Employees, now, where would they run a shuttle bus from this lot back to their facility? It's, it's a bit of a walk and implement weather.
So that's what the auto parking is for, is for individuals to park their car there. That's a security fence proposed or would be proposed around the company's equipment that is utilized with a turnstile. So employees can park, walk through the turnstile, give whatever they need, and vice versa. If there was a gate that would be a post gate at the entrance for the equipment and of auto vehicle, a lot of times to pull up, scan their cars, whatever security system they have, go in, pull in, and then park their personal car in a spot and then take it.
So who, who would own this lot? That's the company? You guys are doing it for profit. So you lease it for profit. That's the purpose of the lot. Okay. All right. Yes, James.
So I, and I'm sure for instance, for sure, so can say, you just raised the question. So conceptually, you're building on spec. I mean, it doesn't necessarily be to the property or that shall not be named. It could be any future development that has a new traditional truck space could be leased to as well. Be expanded offsite of any future. It's not owned by the same property that nobody wants to. Any differences to a, to a yeah, or, you know, other developers and question.
Ran out of space for their, so their mandatory rest period off the highway. Well, one, one thing I want to add on been through the loves. The durance from. And Andy, I know you've had. This is the incrementalism that got the ball rolling for loves. I don't need to adversely reflect on these guys because they're doing what they do. But loves evolved from, we'll just change this text. And another application came in from Lynn Jacobs. We want to change this section a little bit. And the next thing you know, you've got a full-blown major proposal in front of you that had they started there, some of it might not have been, been built. I'm not saying this is good or bad. All I'm suggesting is that the commission needs really look into the future. When you start modifying a little bit of text here, then a little bit of text there.
I'm not sure loves would have continued if they knew all the challenges we're ahead of.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm not sure loves would have continued if they knew all the challenges ahead of us.
They had one advantage. They're a private company. They had the pockets for it.
Yeah.
Someone who was working with a financial institution would have given up.
All right, so I, I think, I think this, I'm not going to stand for against this. I think we need to understand this a lot more and look at our regulations and have some deliberations and so forth.
So if I may, I, I don't think we're actually looking for a vote or a decision.
But you're looking to see, like, you know, whether you should put in an application for a text amendment. And I, I, I personally, I'm not ready to give even that guidance. Is anyone else around this table? Around it with the.
We're pretty, we're pretty silent on public parking.
This is a
So like, you said, one, two vehicles, so.
This is, this is the first one of these I've ever heard of. And, you know, like I'm saying, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. It's just different. So we're, you know, taking a major company, building a leased a, a lot, probably a relatively sophisticated lot with security devices and lighting and so forth. And leasing it to them for, for profit. Okay. I just think we need to have some discussions about this.
I think our middle school parking lot was increased, and we didn't allow that to be paid.
Library was the same one.
Yeah.
But we wanted a purpose.
It seems, I think, one of the things they're looking for, right, they're not looking for you to say, yeah, submit your application or no, don't. But I think one of the things they're looking for is guidance on their approach. We, one of the things that I'm hearing from both sides of the table is that there's a concern related to the long-term use of the property. Obviously, we regulate use. We don't regulate tenant. We don't regulate owner. So if we approve of one person, it, it it can be used by anybody. So the, the development of the site has to stand on its own. However, there are different ways in which we could explore how we arrive at that type of application. And I, we haven't had any discussions about this. I'm thinking out loud, but you know, it, it seems like there's a concern about this being some, finding a way to perhaps tie this to the entity that shall not be named. And I'm not sure there's a way to do that, but is that something you think they should explore as a potential approach to the way they?
That's a good place to start. The, the other place to start is some sort of, and honestly, just spending a lot of money on plans at this point or anything, but just some sort of visual, so we can kind of look at it and say, this is, this is.
But there are potential options for looking at this as an allowable accessory use to an existing operation with certain criteria. So it would essentially be an offsite expansion of an existing operation which would limit and provide greater control, because just like a detached garage is accessory to the house, this could be somehow accessory to.
But it also brings up a lot of concerns about traffic and so forth on a narrow, twisting, winding road that all it invests come out of the dump or anything. I've had near misses. As people come flying over the humps there, where you can't see them.
And we hope to be able to address all the concerns through the approval processes.
And Mike's point is is a good one. That is one of the ideas I thought about, because, yeah, you regulate use, user, but you can tie the use to another use. And that's, that's the kind of feedback we're looking for, because we're happy to make the application that says it could potentially say you can increase the pavement number to thirty-five percent for a surface parking lot that is, however you want to say it, tied to, connected to, used by a nearby, whatever you, so you can do that. So that you know it doesn't, it doesn't get that sold to somebody else who's doing something different somewhere else.
All right, just since this is an informal discussion, that, I don't want to turn this into like some kind of like public hearing light. We did allow some people here to talk. I'm going to let Patrick Lord there. See what he says. He's got his hand up.
Thank you. For the record, I'm speaking as a citizen, a member of a commission, or anyone else on that board or commission. It may behoove the board to seek counsel on this, because it seems like it's setting a precedent and potentially a future precedent where large corporations have their hand in our regulations and changing those for their benefit. And not so much that of the town and citizens, so it may behoove the, the, the commission to seek counsel. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Patrick. All right, so. A lot of homework to be done on this one. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have that unfinished business. A affordable housing plan update.
So I, I just wanted to put this back in the agenda, because it's been hanging, and obviously, the commission's been busy, so and I just didn't want people to wonder where it was. Looks like we're in the home stretch of sort of what may be the busy season, so if we want to look to fix this in earnest in October, basically. in October, based upon what the agenda looks like, if that works.
Yeah, just don't say October four.
No, 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 no. So, you know, we we've already informed the state that basically the schedule has been based upon us starting the, the process following COVID. So that we're, we're good there. We're not going to run into any issues. There's no, it's not like cannabis work. We don't have it. We're somehow going to be subject to something that we're not. The eight dash thirty G appeals process is already in place of it. I just wanted to sort of put that on your radar. So I'll look at the agendas based upon where things stand and I'll, I'll drop it on whichever one following October fourth is light. If that works.
Okay. Yeah, I read an article about this recently. It was talking about how the, the town governments are having a hard time dealing with this and a problem in Connecticut or an improvement in Connecticut that you needed. If there was some sort of county government that would handle this because as I said before, it significantly impacts towns that don't have public sewer and public water. I don't think it's, I don't think that's been thought of at the state level. It's sort of an unfounded mandate. But if it was handled more of a macro level, somewhere between town and state.
It would, it's actually a bit of a double edged sword in that the towns that want it, but don't have the infrastructure, can't get it because the, the money doesn't make sense. And then there are a lot of towns not far from here that sort of say, we don't have the infrastructure. There's no pressure. I mean, if you go down toward Stanford, so much of what they're dealing with of these eight dash thirty G appeals because they don't have the ten percent, but they've got the infrastructure. So these guys just get hammered with these affordable housing applications because they've got the market, they've got the infrastructure and they can get it done. And so they're just, it's this constant pressure that we don't feel here because we can't support the density that's required given the construction costs, which are insane right now.
Yeah.
So we'll probably be subject to the eight dash thirty G appeals process forever. I, I don't, we would have to add, you know, every time we added ten new houses, we'd have to add, you know, eleven or twelve, more doubled than that of an affordable housing. And we're issuing, you know, tens, dozens of, of new home permits per year in certain years, adding zero to this. So we're just getting further away. It's, it's not likely something that's going to sort of change the trajectory of Wellington, but you know, obviously we've got it right over here. So it can be done, but in very low density.
It is, you're referring to the senior.
Yeah, those qualify. And we have others that do as well, but the density is just such a challenge that the, you guys probably remember, what, three years ago now, you put the zone change on, right at the Mansfield line?
The guy was going to develop apartment buildings for graduate students in there.
But he, you know, he's got his wetlands flagged and to get setbacks in there. He, he just can't get the density. He, he tried all different types of construction styles and so, you know, I mean, he's still sort of at it, but he just, the money does not make sense.
A lot of the good lands are already been used up here and then other stuff still farmland and stuff like.
Yeah. I know we haven't looked at it, at it yet. Spoiler alert, I mean, for housing, one of the things we did talk about was looking at soils based on identifying that. And so we did the analysis and we started pulling the GIS layers together and, and looking at it and overlaid it over the parcels. And what's interesting is that some of the hotspots for the most the best soils are some of the more traditional neighborhood areas that we already have. They fall right on top of it. I mean, the luck may not be, but it's kind of interesting that you've got that density in the place that soils perhaps says it's most well suited. But we'll get into that in a couple of weeks. All right.
All right. Approval of minutes. I see you added the president to speak. Additional people on there?
Yes, the others, I think it gets on others present. We, they're done. Obviously, you're looking at them. You don't have to.
Yeah.
If you're not, but we did add that to the, to the top. You can move it to the next week if you.
Relatively. Worry, obviously.
I commend Chris for getting this going right and all those speakers. Trying my best.
We want to hold these till next meeting.
Hold on till next meeting.
Thank you. Some of the stuff I can't forget.
Recordings online too.
Yeah. Yeah, I watch part of it over. I have nothing better to do, but.
Minutes to be tabled till the next meeting.
You can, you can't like.
Not really, but I didn't know.
Good practice.
Well, no, because then you have to vote to a poll from the table and we're not.
We'll, we file them. We have to be filed in seven days. So we'll check that box. We'll put them on the agenda for next week.
All right. I have age, public participation.
Yes, Brad.
You are your hand up first. Yours went up first.
Two things, two things.
Yeah.
On meeting agendas. I remember Frank Henry, he is chairman to make sure that the address is identified, the location of the main building and exactly where in the building the meeting will be. And to say particularly for older Wellington residents that the meeting will be held at the Wellington Town Hall is, can be misunderstood. Because for many of us, the town hall is on the green. This is the town rocks. Just a suggestion. But the other thing I stumbled across the other day is FOIA requires agendas to be available forty eight hours prior to a hybrid meeting. Something you might want to look into. Because a revised agenda came out yesterday. And employees actually requiring that for a hybrid. And, and I think the reason is for people to get organized to attend. I can't recall exactly where I found that, but I know it was on Freedom of Information basis. So I think it's something that, and maybe Erica knows something on that. Just bringing it up. I'm not making a big deal. I don't know. Just, I think it's about the point of concern.
So I guess that means that if something came in forty eight hours prior to the agenda, you just wouldn't put it out till the next minute.
Or less than forty eight.
Less, that's only less than forty eight hours. You just go, well, really, you got to give staff time. I mean, they're not, they're not, they can't do it instantaneously. So if your agenda has gone out and within, I'd say a week, you get something that we put out, probably wait till the next meeting. Sorry.
Yeah, we posted the agenda last week. We revised it to add the Ruby Road because I had been holding off trying to figure out what agenda for to sit on.
Right, right, right.
I don't know the specifics. So I understand the forty eight hour, but I don't think that it effectively precludes the commission from, from revising or amending an agenda.
Well, that's true because we can amend an agenda.
Right. So that it's. What, are we talking special meeting? We're talking hybrid meeting?
I think any, any event.
But we could always, we could always.
I printed out the agenda. It doesn't have that on mine.
Right.
Regular meeting, you can add to the agenda, special meeting.
So you're saying special media or hybrid? Are you using hybrid and special?
No, no, no.
Special.
You can have a special hybrid meeting.
Yeah, you can have a special hybrid meeting. Okay.
A hybrid is the method I was meeting.
Right, correct. All right. Yeah. And I know the Mark Grant's stuff, is that for any meeting? I thought that was more specific to public hearings, but I guess that's for any meeting about the location.
Well, I, I think his focus was on public.
Yeah, right. No, that's fine. I don't want to.
If, if, if somebody misunderstands the agenda and can't get to a public hearing, then it starts to add defects to the process.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And that, that, that was the reason he was such a stickler.
They get delayed all the time because.
Wrong addresses. I know that the forty eight hours applies to a virtual meeting and that's because it, if there's a virtual only meeting, a member of the public has the right to petition an in-person component within forty eight hours. I don't know what they petition if it was hybrid because both options are being accommodated. But.
How much of it? I, I, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
This was something I stumbled across. I, and you know, I, I wish I had paid more attention to where I was on the, on the web. Research and stuff.
He's just going to make sure that, you know, going forward, we, we make it revision to a agenda like as I printed my agenda out to come here. And when I was emailed, it does not have item B on it. My, so it just I should have had that, which and I, I guess putting where we're going to hold the meeting on the agenda specifically, that it's not a big ask.
Yeah, we can add it. It was on the counter. I, I wasn't sure where it was going to be because we weren't sure how many people were going to show up and there was a public report of that. Okay. So we were trying to figure out with all the meeting tech and hybrids. But yeah, that's not a hard thing to do.
All right. I gotta pick up James. Then we're going to go online. We have two hands. Go ahead.
Two quick questions and I asked it, but you know, like, I don't think I had that response. You guys, regarding my, you guys have printed copies of all these application material on hand or do I need to kill a tree and bring?
I think the tree's already dead.
All right. So I need to dedicate that effort. It's a lot of paper.
We printed everything out.
And then this is a procedural question. So if a public hearing is continued, is the floor open again at any meeting despite? I guess what we're trying to ask is next meeting, since it's a public hearing, is it open for discussion to the public again?
I asked attorney that.
You said, no.
Now, why is that?
You can't just keep continuing, continuing. Basically, the applicant has a chance to rebut the items that were brought up the last few meetings. And then that ends it. You can't.
Because it would never end. It would never end. It would never end.
So thirty five day window, the applicant can grant an extension, not the commission. I, I did want to mention that. There, there seems to be a, a sort of a that, that there's a lot of public comment. Why would the town even consider? The town has to consider. We have an application. We have to accept it with a zone change. That requires a public here. We have thirty five days unless the applicant grants an extension. And that ties into that sixty five day aggregate. After the public hearing closes, we have sixty five days to make a decision. If we don't make a decision in sixty five days, it's granted. I mean, it isn't like an endless process. Otherwise, you, a town could hold a landowner hostage forever. And that's not the.
I, I really love the only expression to this.
It's a fair question.
That I'm the only one singled out out of the hundreds of public comments by name. So just wondering if I had the opportunity to respond since the comments were posted by the applicant following closing, when I'm closing. Well, and their response posted three days ago.
So the public hearing, there's, the public hearing is still open. The public comment portion is not. If you were to, if, if you were to submit a document writing, it would still be part of the record. Uh, but that's, so the public comment where someone gets up and addresses the commission during the meeting, that portion is, but you can if you send me something tomorrow, it would go online. It would go to them and the whole same thing would be there.
It would be considered when we're, we're making our decision.
It's still part of the record because it's, it's in there.
And no, it certainly, you know, it's, a lot of people had the talk in the, in those three sessions for long periods of time. Yeah, many, sometimes people came up with it once. So we did our level best to make sure that.
You've been great.
Yep.
We haven't had our show yet.
Okay, I get it. I'm actually, I'm hoping you guys get, get it close.
All right, Nick Tella.
Nick Tella, forty nine Myrtle, with, what comments we just said there kind of makes the last, uh, meeting even more disappointing of how it was handled at the end. Um, but I won't get into it right now. So the issue with the schedule, I'm not sure why it was meant for tonight when you had a play, a board of education meeting. I don't know why there wasn't, you know, any attention given to that when you had an opening pretty much on Friday. I mean, there was people that were stuck between listening to the board of education and you guys. So guys kind of put people in a bad situation there to be able to pay attention to both and to be able to participate. Also want to let you know, uh, so I've contacted the lawyer at, uh, the foyer for the state. Basically, I can't do anything with the last foyer. It had pretty much everything to do with the planning and zoning situations. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that I did resubmit a foyer and day five will be on Friday and you know, if it's not fulfilled, it definitely will entertain the motion to keep on going with the complaint, uh, being that it should be filled by then. Just get a laugh, you know, parking lots and warehouses. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Kathy Demers.
Hi. Good evening. Kathy Demers, forty eight Mason Road. First of all, I'd just like to thank the commission members and the, um, the land use staff for all your work in the last few months. You guys certainly have a lot on your plate. So thank you. Um, a quick question on the agendas under item C, applications for receipt. I'm just wondering why we haven't seen some preliminary information about upcoming applications. I think that that information used to be put on that portion of the agenda. And it was helpful for just planning ahead. Especially even for things like the conservation commission, understanding what might be coming down the pike that we might be involved in. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. So what, what, let's, let's talk about.
When we make, when we make the agenda, if there's an application for a public hearing or something that we can receive and doesn't go right to new business, it'll go there. Last meeting, we had two applications come in literally the day of the meeting. And so I, I can't amend the agenda inside of that window. It's just, it's just the timing. If it works, they'll go there. So those, those two applications came in, they, they will go on a future public hearing. But the date of receipt is determined by statute. So I, I don't have a lot of flexibility of when I show it. But yeah, normally if it came in and we, and it was part of the agenda, it would go.
So would one of those, for instance, be like that cannabis business that.
Cannabis came in after the agenda was published. And, and so the statute says that the date of receipt is the next regular meeting. Okay. So if it comes in on a Monday at eleven fifty nine PM, it's received as of the Tuesday meeting, regardless of if it's on the agenda. So that's why I mentioned it during my staff report and it wasn't on the agenda because it was post. But, but we had, we have shown them that way in the past. It's just when we get them. We don't have a lot of flexibility and that. But yeah, we'll, we'll certainly obviously continue to put those in there as they come in.
All right. Any correspondence?
No.
Jay, staff reporter discussion.
I don't have anything additional that we, we haven't covered that I think is worth adding to the plate at this point.
Nine thirty eight, DM meeting adjourned.